Okay, good evening. This is Rutland Town Planning Commission and this is September 12th of 2024. Let's start the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Prime of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Norman.
I just had one suggestion to add under minutes approval of the August 1 match. To not approve at the last meeting. Enough people who were there weren't at the meeting. That's what the minutes said.
I caught the same thing, Norman, so I agree with you. I concur. I concur. I caught the same thing.
Okay, so any more discussion? All those in favor of the minutes as amended? With the two, with the agenda, with the two sets of minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 The agenda is amended, not the minutes.
That's correct.
Right. You can vote for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, opposed? Okay, public comment? I don't think we have any, so we'll move right down to the Hubbard subdivision hearing. Welcome back. So when we last talked, three weeks ago, we, we said the plat, the final plat wouldn't be necessary until we had made a decision. But we wanted, there were some suggestions to add to what you had on the survey.
I have brought what I believe, hope to believe to be the new final plat.
Oh, okay. So, um, do you have extra copies?
I do.
Excellent.
Hand them out here.
Thank you.
I already have it.
This is going to improve with the requirements from last time. Pretty friendly with the guy at Staples.
He let me sell his paper also.
Yeah.
Does anyone want to keep the person?
I have both copies.
Yeah.
Well, I'll take one of them here last time, so.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
What was that?
That's the one I brought last time with the easements and my proposed lot, my dad's lot, my uncle's lot, map wetlands.
I'll take that.
We got copies, I'll take them as well. This one is about the.
Yeah.
I just like stuff over there.
Yeah, I was not at the last meeting. Appropriate for me to go to one of them.
Cold River.
We'll have, you know, you may as well give us one, we may.
Yeah, why not?
Thank you, we will share.
Okay, so we decided on a number of waivers. Eleven of them. And we also asked that there be placed on the plat, several things here. The name of the municipality. We've got that now. So the one, the newer one is sheet one of two, looks very official.
Actually, number two is showing, that's the water supply and wastewater system.
Yeah, that, that's a couple of things that we asked for. And the bearings for the lot lines. We also talked about the driveway. That seems, yeah.
Would be right of way over existing drive.
Mm-hmm. All the way in and point.
I don't think she took one of those.
Might be one here.
Just shows that.
That is Hubbard Lane Place, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, so we now have, we'll go through the full list of what's required. The boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. Got that? Looks like it's on the new survey. Survey slash.
Talking about this one that we just got, right?
We're talking about, yeah, sheet one of two, got the stamp.
It's actually cut out of the previous acreage from Ted's, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, all of, all of that around the, the plot that you're giving to Teddy is still yours.
Yes.
Yep, then there's an easement from the Velco line.
Yes.
For drive access.
Yes.
So there's only one property, there's only one budding property, even though there are one, two, three, four, five sides of the parcel. Four, is it four or five? One, two, three, five, yeah.
So we've got.
Is the right of way over existing drive intended to be the driveway to the house?
Yes.
And, um, what I don't see is where it winds up. I guess we're only concerned with the access, no we are, it's the whole thing.
Where it comes down to Cold River Road? Where it comes down to Cold River Road?
No, when the, when the, where it goes to the house.
It goes to the.
I think that was on this one, because the first time we came, it was such a big mass of land to show the smaller two acres, we did a different sort of scale map. So, the driveway.
That's Cold River Road.
Yep, and then drive comes up and over, and this is the proposed subdivision lot.
This one.
Yep, so this right here is shown on this map as right of way over existing drive.
That's their right of way.
It doesn't look like it's always the same.
Yeah, and so he's coming up, but we're not, we're only picking it up on this one.
The center line of.
We're picking it up on. We're picking it up right there. Hubbard Lane Place. We're picking it up here.
Yep. So.
Yeah, that's where I have mine. It's this here.
This here.
Yep.
Right off here.
And then picking it up right here, and then on this plat, it's showing me that it goes there.
Yeah, gun dog.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
This right here comes out right.
And then it comes back onto this one right here.
No, that's Cold River, no, 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 this is, wait a minute, I'm upside down.
So this, this mark right here is the same as this right here, so the driveway up and over. See it on this too, we come off of Cold River Road.
This far we go.
Hard left and then a hard right.
So it doesn't show.
Got the inset two.
But it comes off of here, right? Let me see if I understand. This is, this is this, that goes down to the Velco line, and then it turns, and then it turns this way and goes down to Hubbard Lane Place or whatever that is.
That's Hubbard Lane Place.
Right, so it goes like this, Norm. It comes off of here, that's this, it takes us over to the Velco easement line, and then it takes a 90-degree angle and goes down here, joining Hubbard Lane Place, and that takes it out to Cold River Road.
Yes.
Now, if you're comfortable with it, I don't, I can't picture it.
This is an existing drive, you say right of way over existing drive, is there?
Where's that here?
I'm, I'm gonna highlight it for you. Goes this way, and picks this up, and then this goes all the way down to Cold River Road. That's not on here, Cold River Road's not on here, but I'm gonna highlight the same, same area. This is the right of way. And it goes right to the property. Actually, it keeps going, right? Up to the house. Does that end over here?
Yes.
Okay, so that's it, that's the end, and that's the property there.
Oh, that's the end over here.
Yep, so it's not marked on here, but this keeps going to up like.
Okay.
That, I.
So this, this is, this is the lot in question.
Do we have any issues, or are we just trying to fill in?
We're just trying to figure out where it goes.
There is an inset two, Norm. There's an inset two that shows. Up in the upper right-hand corner. So let's keep going through this. Because, I don't want to keep them too long, because we can't have the final hearing tonight, because a notice wasn't, a public notice wasn't filed. We need 15 days' notice to put that notice out, that warning out.
Okay, we'll come back.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
They won't have to bring it out, just.
Yeah, hopefully we can just cross everything off the list here.
That would be great.
So, okay, we're all good with the contiguous property?
Yes.
And subdivided property? Boundaries and area of property subdivided?
Yep.
Proposed subdivision lines?
Yes.
Yes.
Name and address of professional preparer?
Yep.
Janowski? Numeral, numerical and graphic scale of plan date and north arrow? Yep.
Yep.
Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes.
Well, some of those were waived to second.
Yeah, that's true.
It does show it on the second map, too.
This one?
Nope, the one with the bigger picture, it shows like the steep slopes on the east side.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, that has, shows the tree line.
I thought we were talking about the contour lines on here.
Nope.
Those are there, too.
Great.
Okay. Proposed improvements, including roads, utilities and easements, rights of way and structures. Say that was a yes.
I have the structure itself, it's in the subdivided property and any of the improvements there, the leach field and.
And the rights of way.
And the rights of way going down to the Velco power allowance easement.
And the location map, that would be the inset.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll say it meets all the requirements. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, no objection.
I guess there's nothing else to fill out, Bill, right, until we do the hearing now?
Water supply information, did we address that?
That's marked for proposed well location on the top map.
And the septic tank.
The bigger one here. Oh, it's right there.
The leach field, it's all there.
Leach field.
That's right.
Okay. So, um, our next meeting will be October 3rd or October 24th?
Is it tonight?
We have everything we need to proceed. If we had done the notice, we could have, you know, voted and made a decision this evening.
October 3rd would be our next meeting for the final?
Yeah, we, yeah, next meeting, that will be a public hearing. We gotta do the public hearing, and to do a public hearing, we gotta put something in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah, that's right there.
So it takes 15 days to do that?
Yep.
So, 15 days before the 3rd, I mean, or you can just give Bill permission now to, to say that we're gonna have a public hearing on October 3rd.
Oh, I thought you did that last week.
I remember, you said you had, you just, you had to follow up with me, let me know, so I didn't hear from you, so I couldn't put it out there, so.
Yeah, that would be great if you could, though.
Okay, we're ready for the 3rd.
Yeah, I guess he wasn't sure you had everything you squared away on, on this new one. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, okay, we'll do a public hearing on the 3rd, and I don't think we need anything else from them, from you two.
But we gotta be here on the 3rd, of course.
Yeah, yeah, that is required. And then after that would just be the, the Mylar.
Yep.
Of, of this, of what, you've got everything, you know, plotted out.
What's, aren't those Mylars?
No, Mylars are.
Oh, okay.
Another, another expense, but they're permanent, they're plastic, you know, encased in plastic, so.
Perfect.
They'll stand the test of time.
That gets filed with the clerk's office, right?
The Mylar.
That stays on record.
These are drafts for us to examine and comment on, and then there's the final one that they file forever.
Big book in there.
Right, that's right.
Okay, Ted and Theo?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your time, folks.
We'll see you on the 3rd.
Yes, we'll be back.
And Bill, get that notice out for the 3rd.
He's on.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Couple of bucks on this one.
Hold on, great detail on this one.
Great. I rolled up in this one, Jim. Need more paper on this one.
Okay, I should have mentioned this earlier, but I do not have a copy of the streets and sidewalk ordinance, even though it was mailed out. Was that mailed out with the materials, maybe the materials?
Yep.
We've got quite a few things that aren't reflected in here, that have come up at the last minute. It's, but, this is the river corridor bylaw.
Stop, sorry.
So I'm, I would suggest, unless someone has really studied this and has some recommendations, I would suggest that we maybe hold off on this for another meeting, this, the streets and sidewalks ordinance.
Move to table review of the streets and sidewalk ordinance until a future meeting.
A second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
So what date is it put off to?
Probably the 3rd, but let's go through some of this other stuff first.
I made it particular, I made it vague because I wanted to give the chair enough flexibility to put it back on the agenda when she deems it possible.
That is most appreciated.
Actually, technically, I don't think you need, once you got a second on a motion to table, I don't think you need to take a formal vote. The second is the vote to table the motion, the table, the agenda, but, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, anyway.
Well, we'll cross all the Ts, whether they're or not.
There you go. It's tabled, anyway.
So, yeah, when we go back to the streets and sidewalks, we were, we were, so for the next time, to keep in mind, we were thinking about, you know, do we have enough language in there for the width of, 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 especially driveways? And especially going over streams and things like that, and is there, if there is enough language in there about slopes? And I think it's also missing something about, it, it, it does miss any consultation with the planning commission.
Any what?
There's no requirement to consult with the planning commission before, you know, a new street or sidewalk is put in, it's mostly, you know, for our purposes, we talked about streets and roads.
Right.
So those are things we probably want to change next time.
Okay.
But we've got this evening, rather spend some time on first the river corridor ordinance, and then, um, we, just today, I got the subdivision regulations back from our town attorney. And, um, yeah, I was kind of surprised, and he has spent a lot of time on it, because a lot has changed since they were passed in 88, or whenever it was. And we had, we had some, we have some things in there that we cannot legally, you know, ask for anymore, that's not, they're not even in statute. And so he made a number of suggestions there. And then we have an assignment from the select board. I also have an update on the Pocket Park, Andy.
Wonderful.
For this evening, and, and we can talk a little bit about Cortina and what's, what's new there. So the river corridor ordinance.
Yep, there you go.
If folks have copies of this, the table that's on page one and two is something that we, something that, you know, really clarifies what this corridor bylaw would do compared to what we already require for flood hazard areas, and what's, what's in the floodway regulations as well, the flood hazard and the floodway regulations. And then on page five, we, there's the two different kinds of infill development that are allowed, that we should be able to explain to folks as well.
The only copy you got?
It's the only copy that Dana has.
It's the only one I printed. It's online, but I don't, I don't have a hard copy of it. Do you have a copy of this? I, I printed it.
This is what I have. You got it, then.
It's the same one.
So, yeah, I mean, we should all read this through, but those are the things that will probably be asked about most.
So pages one and two and page five?
Yeah.
I skimmed it, but I can't say that I could comment on it.
And again, this is going to be required in one of the things that we're gonna talk about later. Another piece of legislation that was passed this year. So, and, and, you know, we talked about, we talked about because of the reimbursement still being, people, towns that pass river corridor bylaws would still be eligible for the, the extra reimbursement when there's a disaster. We talked about that's reason enough to continue to, to pursue this.
So Barbara, if, if I may, just ask a question. Well, let me give you an example, and then it will be clear what my question is. So, just in, giving a cursory review, oh, where am I now? Um, I think I'm on page five, I'm not exactly sure. But it is under D. Oh, that's a little better than mine, yep, because mine is a little small. Is that page five?
Yeah.
Okay, so it is on page five. Infill, it says, development must be located no closer to the top of bank than the existing primary structures within a gap that is no more than 300 feet. So I understand the, um, diagram, I understand the language, but I don't know what it actually refers to.
Top of bank?
No closer to the top of the bank, bank of the, the waterway, right? No closer to the top of the bank than the existing primary structure within a gap that is no more than 300 feet. So.
Two buildings.
Oh, is that what it's referred to?
Feet apart.
Two buildings.
Two structures.
So the structure that you're referencing has to be within 300 feet.
Development must be in the top of the bank, no closer to the top of the bank than the existing primary structure. So the existing structure, if it exists and it's within 200 feet, it's grandfathered.
Within 300 feet.
No, no, that's what I'm trying to figure out in my head.
So this is for new development?
Yeah, and this is if you're adding a building. I understand that. So I, this is just the way my mind works, so I was gonna say that perhaps we should have somebody who could help interpret, because my question is, I didn't want to bog us down tonight. So that something is within 200 feet of the bank, it already exists there, therefore it's grandfathered in. And, because that's the primary existing structure, and then you want within a gap that is no more than 300 feet, no more than 300 feet away from the existing structure?
Or from the bank.
Existing structure.
The existing structure.
Yeah.
Right, in which direction, towards the bank, because that would put it, that would.
No.
No.
You, you would want to go laterally at that point.
Yeah. Further away from the top of the bank. Or possibly, or if the parallel
Possibly.
to the, to the bank.
No closer.
Exactly, no closer.
But it still would have to respect the 300 foot, so it would be obliquely located away from, 300 feet away from.
The 300 foot, if this is the bank.
Yep.
You got a structure here, you got a 300-foot line, and anything else coming in can't be any closer to the bank than that.
Uh, yes, I, okay, I understand, now I understand that, because that's parallel to the other, to the other structure.
So this, if you got a 50-foot setback here.
Yep.
Then that 300-foot line goes this way, and you still have to maintain a 50-foot setback.
But, okay.
Anywhere along.
But if the setback is greater than the, than the setback currently, that was my real question.
Yes, it says, then the existing primary structures must be located no closer to the top of the bank than the existing primary structure.
So you could build closer than the, the regulations that were promulgating?
Yes, yeah.
So if there's an existing structure, a complementary structure could be put on the same property, setback at least as far as the existing structure, if it is grandfathered, otherwise.
Well, it is grandfathered, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that sounds like that's to keep anyone from having, you know, a half mile. That, that sounds like that's to keep anyone from having, you know, a half mile and, and having a new structure.
Right.
Right. Right, I think the thinking of the state, the, you know, the people that work in this field is that, yeah, anything more than three hundred becomes more of a flood hazard. If, if it's within three hundred feet, it's, it would be affected by a flood about the same way.
But this is no closer than, oh, wait a second, no closer than the top of the bank than the existing primary structure within a gap that is no more than, so it has to be within three hundred feet of the existing structure.
Yes. Yep, is that correct? Is that what the gap means? That any new structure.
Yeah.
Of course, can't be any closer to the bank.
I mean, that's.
Well, that's a given, that's a given.
That's a given, right. I'm just trying to see how, see it shown.
Yep.
Yeah. And then.
This has to be at less than three hundred feet.
The gap is.
Yeah.
Three hundred.
So this gap is whatever, if it's.
Back from the existing structure.
Any new structure is going to be.
Right.
It's lateral, it's, it's in the gra, it's in the little graphic there.
My, my apologies, I opened the can of worms, I was.
No, no, this is exactly why I brought this up, because this is, this is like the crux of, of this ordinance. This is what we'll be getting the most questions about. Well, where can I put something?
Right.
And you can, we're not saying you can't, but these are the parameters for how you can put another structure.
So let me go back, because this was the example that was supposed to support my question. Uh, it, it, would somebody be available to help interpret? I mean, I appreciate all, all of you who helped me to understand this, but I'm just wondering if we have questions, whether those questions could be best answered by the person that, I can't remember his name.
Yeah, I could that.
Huh?
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we, we could ask.
Okay.
We could ask, yeah, but I, I, I would suggest that we try to get as familiar with this as possible so that we don't start from scratch again with. You know, it's like.
So my point, then Barbara, was only to, if we do this and get this prepared, we might not want to debate it all among ourselves. We might say, I have a question on this section, that section, we get those sections.
Exactly.
Then we invite him in to talk to us about those, so that we're not speculating.
That would be a great, yeah, a great thing for the next meeting is to come with your questions.
Right, and then we would invite him to come back to a future meeting.
Or maybe just write back to us. I mean, he'd.
Okay, whatever.
He's got a huge territory.
Meeting doesn't work for me, it's a religious holiday.
I'm sorry?
The next meeting doesn't work for me, it's on a religious holiday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, so if, if possible.
So.
If not, I realize I'm going to alter it, and that's okay, but I.
Okay, so questions by the twenty-fourth?
October?
In October.
Okay.
And so then there's that, that other figure here, where the shadow, where you can build behind a structure you already, already have. And so again, it's between the river channel and the river corridor boundary. And there are these boxes with dimensions.
Yep.
Of where you can build behind a structure and where you can build behind septic and below ground utility. Yeah, but those are, those are tough.
That one was more complex to me.
Well, I tried, I thought I was taking the easier one, that's why I just, I just didn't want to open up a can of worms and have us have a big, huge discussion, so. I would agree with you, Sherman, though, on the other one.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll get, we'll get a lot of questions about that, but when we go back to the table on pages one and two and go down the River Corridor column. I mean, we, we may have some changes here too, because we're not used to this language, since we don't have zoning, and.
Feel free.
Are you on page one, Barbara, right now?
Yep, page one, so the river, you know, new structures are allowed. It's something we have to review each time, so conditional use review and a permit. Um, storage, same thing. Improvements to existing structures is permitted and needs to be reviewed, conditional use. And going down that same column, you know, we just it's a lot of the same sort of stuff, road maintenance is a little bit different, that's, that's exempted. So we wouldn't have any say on that one. Bridges and culverts, channel management are both exempted and conditional, no, are state permit required. Bill, I mean, it's going to be a lot of work to this. And recreational vehicles, just pull one out, and that is permitted, does need an administrative permit. So there would be an administrative permit that would go through bill, and then there would be a, a permit that we would be deciding on.
So Barbara, help, help me understand this.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, I know.
I don't understand where you get that from.
The P's, number thirteen.
It's, it's all pulled out of the text. It's in there somewhere.
On page there's a, there is the glossary of terms on table summary.
Right above it.
It's toward the end.
Yeah, room numeral three, summary table, it has the descriptions of what the letters signify. Recreational vehicles aren't structures. So, oh, you mean for storing recreational vehicles?
Oh, no. Does permitted mean it's allowed, or permitted means it requires a permit?
It requires a permit.
An RV, that's what I'm thinking it may mean, recreational vehicle, an RV or travel trailer.
Exempted means.
Which would be a registered vehicle.
You're free and clear.
Just, I guess the thought would be, it's permitted, because they could move it easily.
Just for it to pass through.
Pardon?
I, I'm not sure what.
Be some work.
They would be allowed in the, in the river corridor.
Because they can be moved.
Just to stand there or just to pass through, I mean, if it, if it.
No, one would assume it would be parked, right? I wouldn't make that assumption.
So I couldn't. So we've got a couple, we've got a couple discussions going here, let's, let's do them one by one. Go ahead.
Well, we were looking at recreational vehicles specifically, just as an example, and, and trying to understand, does that mean not permanently park, semi-permanently park one in the corridor?
It's probably a definition.
I, I assumed that we would get a little more understanding of this once we've been able to read and understand what.
Yeah, this is a pretty good glossary, like, in the back, so it's, it's pretty, um, pretty elaborate for the recreational vehicle, for what we're talking about. It's built on a single chassis, it's four hundred square feet or less when measured at the largest horizontal projection. Designed to be self-propelled or permanently towable by a light duty truck. Designed primarily not for use as a permanent dwelling, but as a temporary living quarters for recreational camping, travel, or seasonal use.
So it, it's, it's allowed to be on the property in a particular flood area because it's movable?
Yeah, and used.
Well, what, one has to be moved in.
I think this, this is boilerplate stuff that came out.
Yes.
Yeah.
In Florida, they have huge parks like that, that are in near rivers. You know, where people bring these travel trailers and, and park them. So I think that's where, that's probably where this thing comes from, you know.
So yeah, and when, when you're looking at this, on page three is a whole list of the exempted activities. So these do not require any kind of a permit. So that's, that would be good for us to know and commit to memory at some point. Mary Beth, do you have any questions or anything, comments?
Yeah, I'm just kind of following the line. Thanks.
Good.
You can make renovations to your building as long as it doesn't change the, the current footprint and where it is placed, okay?
We may get some questions answered by just having time to review this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does everybody have a copy?
We got it in email.
We got it in email, does everybody have a printer?
Is this a different copy than the one we had before?
It, it. Um, this has been out since twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, so I think maybe we've been looking at it for the last two, last couple of years.
You know, this brings up a point that has been, um, a bugaboo to me. We come in here, we get notice, it's fine, but to expect that I'm going to print off a twenty-two-page
Right.
document.
Right.
Is just hogwash. I'm not going to do that.
And, and the color.
Those things should be sitting on our desks when we get here.
Yeah.
When, I don't mind one or two pages. You know, that's, that's pretty routine. We, we have that every time. But twenty-two pages ought to be sitting here.
Yep, okay, good point. Good point, so.
There's always, there's been a standing offer to print any documents anybody needs. I, I can do that, that's no problem. If I assume everybody wants it, then I, I'm going to print a hundred, I'm going to print two hundred pages if nobody wants it. So I, I, I'm happy to print them, like, I can do that, but I, I hesitate to do it proactively because a lot will do bring it. So if you want it, just reply to my email and say, print it for me, I'll, I'll help for you.
I'll put in a standing order for mine.
It's also unusual that we all, everybody shows up, everybody else always shows up, so.
I'll have a standing no.
Bill, you can say all you want, oh, but I'm not going to change my position.
I, I don't want you to, Jim, I'm not asking you to, just, if, if you're coming, just let me know and I'll print it for you, that's fine. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a standing offer.
And you, you, given what we have on the table tonight, you might want to start a list of, of things, especially for color prints. We, you definitely would want this in color, and you can do that, right?
Yeah.
I just, I printed it down, it's not a color, so I'll need one.
So, so this is our homework, yep, go ahead, Dana. So you should all have, you should all get copies.
Who wants a copy right now?
I think we're about ready.
I, you know, I don't need it right now, I guess, where we're at, but.
Yeah, yeah, before we leave. Ever, those people, we got, what, three?
But before we leave, just, well, we'll, we'll, I know that, that's fine.
So just to say, there's an alternative. I came in a few minutes early and went to Bill and asked him to print a copy for me. So that's, that's how I got my copies. My printer doesn't, can't handle this much.
Yep, yep. Understood, understood, and, and given that this is going to be homework, maybe going home tonight might be the best scenario with what you need. Dana?
Uh, just a clarifying question to Bill. Because I understand the logistics behind the number of copies that Bill may be juggling. And so, uh, the first thing is if you want to put in a standing order, that's fine. I think Bill will do that. He just wants to know that you're coming to the meeting so that he can have it for you, because he doesn't, I don't think, want to print unnecessary copies when people are either going to be here or be able to pick them up. Did I interpret that correctly?
They're, they're actually, even, color copies are fine, there, there is an actual cost for every time we make a color copy, so it, we, we do incur a cost to do that, so we, we do have an allowance, but it goes pretty, pretty quick, so. So, no, no, it's no problem, just, like, which, which will make sure it's, it's worthwhile, so absolutely.
So, Bill, usually if I want you to print something, I just send you an email and say, I'll be at the meeting, please print it.
And it's there.
Yep.
No problem.
I often get printed copies of stuff in between the meetings, or between the, when we get the notice and.
Yep.
So we can review it. Now, something like this need more than a two days' notice.
Well, I didn't understa, I didn't think we were going to be actually discussing this in depth, because we didn't have sufficient time to.
Right, right, and we're not, we're not, we're just.
I think anything that comes up in this is a depth.
Well, that's true too, but we're not, we're, we're not, you know, going to spend that much time on it, and we're certainly not going to make any decisions on, on anything about it tonight.
The way I perceived, and the way I perceive large documents in general is that it's a courtesy for us to look it over to decide what we want to do with it, whether it's Andy reading it on his iPad or me trying to read it on my phone, or, you know, printing it out. I happen to print that out and, and sidewalks, because I've missed the last two weeks, and I wanted to be at least uh, up, up to speed for my meeting tonight, so tha- that's why I did that. But I, I think that if we just communicate with Barbara or Bill, that we should be able to get out all of our needs met, and I think Bill is happy to accommodate us whatever we need, and no, just let him.
Yeah, so we're going to have quite a list tonight. Um, so let's go back to the streets and sidewalk. Any, anyone need that printed out? So we're starting a list for Bill, for the homework. Anyone need streets and sidewalks?
I've already, I've got something, I think this is from Bill from last time.
So yeah, it hasn't changed.
I've got.
Hasn't changed.
So why don't you just read the, the lecture?
No one needs streets and sidewalks, Barbara.
Okay. And the river corridors, we've got three. We've got Howard, we've got Norm, and we've got Jim. Would like a copy before they leave tonight, or, yeah, let's, let's do it before they leave tonight. Okay?
Mary Beth, do you need anything?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll do river corridors on the twenty-fourth. Everyone will have a copy and come, and, and come with your questions. Okay, and we'll try to answer those, our, the twenty-fourth is bad? You're shaking your head, Norm, I thought it was the third.
October twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
It's the third. October twenty-fourth is fine.
Okay. So come with questions, we'll try to answer those ourselves, we'll try to figure them out, and what we can't, we'll.
We'll send on to.
Do, yeah.
Questions go, what's his name again? Sorry.
I don't remember.
It's not just me, they're not.
He made a good question.
Kyle, Kyle Mani.
Kyle.
Dash, yeah. Exactly. Okay.
He was very knowledgeable until.
Yes, he is, and he knows this stuff inside, and he knows this ordinance inside and out. Even the one we're looking at, which is relatively new, and it's just for towns with no zoning.
So the, um, okay, and you'll let us know when we're going to review streets and sidewalks?
Let's do that on October third.
You want to do that October third?
Yeah.
It's October third?
Streets and sidewalks.
Sidewalks, so if you have any comments, Norm, if you want to get those to us before that meeting. Okay. Okay. We got, there's a lot of stuff tonight. Um, the Kevin made, we'll jump to subdivision bylaws and the work that we did, it's been at least a year, I think. Um, to.
We sent it to him in November.
Yeah. So he's, um, he's saying, long last, here's my review, I apologize for the delay, but this proved to be a massive undertaking, given that the existing bylaws themselves have many illegal provisions, and a great many statutory changes have been enacted, enacted in the forty-four years since the existing subdivision regulations were adopted. It's a tome, I know, but I think the explanations and suggested changes were necessary, given that the planning commission has been used, has been used, has been used to operating with regulations which long ago ceased being. has been used to operating with regulations which long ago ceased being legal and some which never were. Um, that's a little scary. Um, and then he, then he had another thought. Um, there is no provision, um, in what we gave him, so I don't think there's any, I haven't had a chance to look at what he gave us, um, but I don't think it's in here either. Of, um, ha-, setting up an administrative officer um, that is, is required now. We usually think of these folks as the zoning administrator because, because that's how we encounter them. Um, however, um, statute does not restrict the appointment of administrative officer to towns which have zoning. The, the planning commission could have one to administer these subdivision bylaws. The planning commission nominates and the select board appoints the administrative officer. The decision whether to have and if so, to actually appoint the administrative officer rests with a select board. So he sent this to Mary Ashcroft, too. You need someone whose job it is to screen applications, tell people what they need to submit to make an application complete, warn hearings, kind of what Bill does now, but this would put it in the actual ordinance. My expectation, assumption, guess is that Bill Sweeten has been acting as the de facto administrative officer without appointment. However, I do not know how the PC actually operates from the administrative perspect- perspective, but that is how we've been operating. The subdivision bylaws really ought to codify the administrative officer's authority and duties, which include waiver authority. So Bill, would you like that waiver authority, too?
For the, uh, empty salary increase or that's just a honorary thing?
It's just to be done in your spare time.
In your spare time.
I'm sorry.
All the time I have it.
So after waiting eleven months, we now need to still add something to what he reviewed.
Like we need to subtract and add and multiply and divide, so.
And I'm not quite sure where that goes. Where the best.
I haven't seen it, so I, I didn't get a copy yet, but so I don't know what it looks like.
Right. So, yeah, the date is September eleventh on it. Um, so you can make copies of this tonight?
Yeah, probably future.
Probably for everyone?
Is it, is it the whole thing with all his notes?
It, he has, he has finalized everything. He has made it a finished product. Except, except afterwards, he thought, wait a minute, there's no administrative officer.
Oh.
Oh.
Why don't we just do that to begin with, Dana? Why don't we just give him the whole thing? Here, just fix it.
I.
So, so Bill, how many hours did we labor over that? How many days or how many months?
No, he looked at what you did and I, he incorporated that.
I, I was.
That's fine.
I, I was, I was being somewhat facetious.
Yeah, it was.
Because we asked a lot of questions about those references because you and I, I know, sat down and said, I can't find a link to this.
Well, I.
I don't, that's what he did. He flagged a whole bunch. So, I mean, I would like to think that if he thought it was a quagmire, he should have seen it before. What's that?
He probably would have turned it away. So, yeah, I mean, if we want to give everybody, that's fine. Give a copy of this. Sure. Why not?
Yeah, I mean, it, now it's, let's see, page twenty-two, but it starts.
I, I, I would.
It starts on page two. So twenty-one pages, is that about what it was before?
I, I, I have to go back. My, my, my folder on the subdivision stuff is still sitting.
He, he might have had to take some stuff out to maybe sure. It seems shorter to me, but.
Um, I, my recollection is that we were, we had shortened it. My recollection was it was about twenty-five pages.
Twenty, originally it was twenty-nine.
Okay, twenty-nine pages.
The current document is twenty-nine pages.
The one we submitted to him?
No, the current one.
The current one. We cut it down by, I want to say about eight pages.
So it sounds, yep, sounds about right.
Because there were a bunch of things that we just, uh, took out because they were irrelevant, because we had ordinances like the streets and sidewalks. And if I remember correctly, we took out maybe a page and a half just of, of references that were no longer needed. And we just replaced it by, we'll be in compliance with our streets and sidewalk ordinance. So, uh, I, I think, I think we cut out about seven pages. I, I remember about twenty-five percent reduction, but that may be wrong. That may just be off the top of my head.
So who would like copies of what, what Kevin sent us? Who would like to go home with copies?
Well, I mean, I don't need it to go home with, but I'd like it before the next meeting, so I can.
Who would, who would like?
We have it scanned in and, and emailed to us.
Uh, yeah, I can, I can easily do that. Um, and then, but that's only for those who can print it off, it off at home.
Yeah. Or have an iPad fancy enough to read.
So.
We're going to, we're going to get the revised ordinance as prepared by Kevin. Is that correct?
Right. And.
And his.
And the suggestion for expanding Bill's duties.
The comments you read from.
Right. Right. Which, there is no worrying for that yet. So we still, this is still not a, a done deal. It still needs the administrative officer added to it. So we've got Norm Sherman, Jim for copies tonight?
I'll take one. Well, I'll, I'll take one whenever it's convenient for Bill. Tonight?
Yeah, I don't need it tonight.
But I'll take a copy.
If he does it tonight, I'll get it. I'll take it also.
Anyone else?
I don't need it tonight, but.
He'd love one.
You're doing here, it was fine.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be in color.
And I will, I will email this out tomorrow to everyone.
Okay. I'll take your copy because I'll mark it up. That's the only way I can process. I can process this screen unless I'm.
I'll print it out if I need.
Yeah.
So just to give Bill a, 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 a little more time, would it? I'm okay picking it up sometime next few days, within, within the next few days.
Okay.
Uh.
That's fine.
That's okay? For everyone?
It's fine with me, too. There's no point in him staying late after the meeting.
Okay.
Just email us when it's ready. Okay?
Yeah.
So, Bill, uh, we've got three copies of the river corridor and five for the subdivision. And I'll, I'll leave.
Yeah. Oh, Andy didn't say, yeah, that's right. Sorry.
And I'll leave this with you. Copies that I have. Okay. So, uh, our new assignment to add is is the housing and the river corridor and the, and the revamped Act Two-Fifty legislation that passed. So we may be, um, referring to a couple of things, the river corridor ordinance. Um, the, the river corridor legislation that passed, that's going to make it mandatory in like three or four years. That's Act One-Twenty-One. This new housing in, in Act Two-Fifty-One is Act One-Eighty-One. So sometimes it's just easier just to use those numbers, but it could get confusing since they sound similar.
Act One-Eighty-One is for housing?
Yeah, it's, it's the new Act Two-Fifty. So it deals with housing, it deals with wetlands. It deal, uh, it, it, with, um, natural resources in, in general, you know, development.
Yep.
And where it can be and where it can't be now. So we'll probably have a little more printing to do. Um, and, um, maybe a, a fun component of this. Rutland Town would, since we don't have zoning, there's probably two categories that we would go for. And the select board asked us to look, look this legislation over. It is massive. Um, and make some suggestions. The there's a, they call them tiers. And if you, if you, um, if you can meet the first tier, which is One-A, this is all going to get so confusing. There is no Act Two-Fifty permitting required.
What?
There's no Act Two-Fifty per- permitting required for One-A.
That's criterion one, A.
It exempts that, that, um, being in that category, One-A exempts a town from Act Two-Fifty permitting for all subdivisions, developments, and changes, um, to existing permitted projects in that area. To get that, this is probably a little bit higher than we can attain. It's the highest one. You need an approved municipal plan. You need boundaries consistent with, um, regional plans downtown and village centers and planned growth areas. So we'd have to designate those areas. Um, you need flood hazard and river corridor bylaws, which apply to the entire municipality. Um, you need permanent municipal zoning and subdivision bylaws. It's a good thing we've got the subdivision bylaws back, so.
We need permanent zoning.
Yeah. Um, per- permanent, yeah.
If we don't have zoning, what does that do to the rest of the budget regulations?
Um, they, they become stricter as you go down the tiers. And so, you know, you don't get, you, you, you would fall more and more under Act Two-Fifty jurisdiction.
So what page is this on that you're reading from?
Well, this is, this is actually a, um, a summary that one state department does for regional planning commissions every year. And, and usually the document is like this big for all the legislation that passed that would pertain to regional planning commission. This is just one. This is just the Act Two-Fifty. So this came from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And if people want copies of that, um, we can make them. But we haven't made, haven't gone through the whole list yet. Um, you all.
Necessary?
So is this?
To go through the list?
Yeah.
Is this tier One-A that you're, you're reading from?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that we're still on One-A. And, and this is, this is where you're exempt from all Act Two-Fifty permitting.
Excuse me, Robert. Could you just go back and read that thing about the zoning and that one little paragraph? I mean, are we, are we all right that we don't have zoning in this town? So can we comply with One-A?
We would not, no.
Okay.
No, even if we.
One-A is out.
Don't bother readers.
Okay, so then, One-A is out, then let's go to One-B.
Well, One-B includes zoning, too.
Then let's.
So let's not.
What I, what I understood you to say when I asked the question is that if we don't have zoning, then state regulation increases uh, with various sections of the legislation now. And you're reading from what, the new house, from the housing?
And this is Act One-Eighty-One.
That's housing.
Is the Act Two-Fifty, is what, what is, how Act Two-Fifty was changed to accommodate housing and smothered.
Right. So Act Two-Fifty says if you have these things, including the zoning ordinance, then we're delegating more power to the town, control to the municipality.
Correct.
But if you don't have it, then things go uphill in terms.
Right.
Right. There's more and more requirements.
So they revert, in a sense, revert back to where we are.
So with this homework, the select board is asking us to review this stuff. Um, maybe, you know, my next suggestion was to have a state housing person come down and maybe tell us or walk around, see where districts could be, see if we could check that one off. But they're basically, the select board's basically looking for recommendation from us. And that could include we, we enact zoning.
So how far down do we have to go before we, without zoning? So when we start to read this, so, I mean, are we eligible in One-C or One-D?
Um, we're not eligible for, and of course, they, they skip around, that we're not eligible for One-A or One-B. Um, tier, th- those are tier One-A and B. Tier two and three, um, are areas not w- we, we would have to map out critical natural resources uh, defined during the, um, Act Two-Fifty process and the rulemaking that will, will. So there will be areas that we mapped and not developable. So it gets harder and harder to, to develop as you go down this line. And, um, I don't I'm not sure there's a list of requirements for those as much as, um, you're not going to be able to do stuff. Um.
You're not going to be able to do it with an Act Two-Fifty, without an Act Two-Fifty permit.
Right. Right.
We're not going to be able to regulate it ourselves. Since we don't have zoning, there are certain things we can't regulate ourselves, if I understand what you're saying correctly.
Yeah, yeah. For this, for a tier two and three, um, creates new jurisdictional thresholds and related definitions, commercial, industrial, or residential use at or above twenty-five hundred feet. Um, so there will be, during the rulemaking, there will be stipulations on how that will be done and construction of improvements for commercial, industrial, or residential purposes will be part of that rulemaking. The tier-three rulemaking must consider river corridors, headwater streams, statewide significant habitat connectors, riparian areas, Class A water, natural communities, and other critical resources. And they're going to do that with a stakeholder group and they're going to map all those out. Uh, so what will be allowed for development will be more constricted than it is now.
Will require Act Two-Fifty in some cases. Is that what you?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Is it time for a question?
Sure.
Put your hand down. Require Act.
I was resting on my head. It was supposed to still be up. I just, so tired. Um, my spidey sense is telling me that we have three substantive tasks that are looming before us. One is a review of the bylaws that Kevin has given us. And we have a task on the twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken.
And that's River Corridor.
That's where we're corridors.
But that's probably a good one for, a good date for the.
But we have four then. I, I missed one.
Be good for the subdivision to give us.
That's another one. That's number four. Okay. So I'm actually really getting ahead of myself. Um, s- so, um, now I have, I have four major tasks. My scribbles are all intelligible. We have, uh, streets and sidewalks. We have, uh, river corridors. We have subdivision bylaws, and we have Act One-Eighty-One.
Mm-hmm.
Subdivision bylaws and what?
Act One-Eighty-One, that's the housing, wetlands, and.
Yeah, two sub, right.
So my head is kind of swishing.
Yeah.
And I know that that was the intent, Barbara, when you started telling us we had a lot on our plate, but, um, so I'm, my mind is telling me that we need to come up with a plan and we need to let the select board know that this is not going to get done by November. And we need to set our priorities as to what is really important and the order in which we should tackle it. I have a couple of suggestions, but I'll let anybody else want to chime in if, if what I'm expressing resonates with anybody else sitting around the table.
First of all, thank you. Uh, it gives us, at least begins to give us a sense of structure. And, and, you know, I was feeling the same kind of, well, where do we start and how much time do we have to do it? So we, maybe we want to set out a timetable first and do one, two, three, four, and whether we have to, uh, or maybe we should consult with the select board on how we take this up. I mean, I don't remember in the seven or eight years I've been here, uh, we've had this kind of load um, in terms of heavy lifting and deep, deep analysis.
Mm-hmm.
So Dana, I think you're correct. I think we ought to come up with. I think we ought to come up with a schedule, and I think we ought to make sure it's okay with the select board before we do anything.
Um, I think, yeah, I think it will be.
Well, I think that, I mean, I agree with you, Norman. I think that we should tell them what we think is important.
Yeah.
And ask them to adopt our, support us in our view, rather than just throwing it out to them to decide.
Keep in mind that some of these are related. Uh what we do with river corridors will impact, you know, what we do with one eighty-one.
Yeah.
So when we pick, when we try to select that priorities.
But we have to be familiar with all of it before we even try to set our priorities, so we know how complicated it is and how much time it's going to take us. I mean, my sense is this is at least a year-long project, these four.
Yeah, I'm not sure uh the select board wants to wait that long because it's, it's going to be so time-consuming to get these components rolling and get the ordinances. So I, yes, it is very complicated. Um, we can solicit some help from the state um agencies uh for like the housing component and, and the village center and those designations. Um, but we, we don't, for, for, like for one eighty-one, the select board is just asking for what our, our recommendation is. You know, we're going for tier one A, tier one B, and, and why? And then that will trigger whether we need to, to add zoning to this list of our, our workload and to get river or to get, and or to get river corridor bylaws, you know, sent to the select board, approved by us and sent. So yeah, I think one eighty-one is the place to start.
That's not where I would be starting, but.
Where would you start?
I would be starting with our bylaws, because I think.
The subdivision?
Uh whatever Kevin just gave back to us, yeah.
The ordinance for the subdivision, um, okay, yes, we, you're right, you're absolutely right. That's part of some of the criteria here, to have those in place. So, okay.
Well, the, the, the thing that goes along with such a massive um regulation as we're looking at there is once you start working with the thing on the ground, those revisions galore will crop up.
Right. Um, there, there will be a, you know, a, a clock ticking. I mean, I think, you know, it, some of this can go in effect in a couple of years, and then there will be a couple of year window, a couple more years of a window to get this stuff done. But if we don't, if we don't act on this, we're not helping developers. We're not helping, you know, i- if this is going to help housing, we're not doing that.
Well, the taxpayer is number one, and that's two.
Yeah, there, there may be some impact on taxpayers. I'm not quite sure what that would be, but there always is, isn't there?
Sherman. When I, when I look at the, the four areas that we're talking about, in some cases, we need to finalize a document.
Right.
There you go. In other cases, our opinion may be of value to the select board. So I would think we would, we could, we could go through the four areas and, and come up with a priority, and the priority is not just we'll do this in three months, but we'll give you information at this level, not a final whatever.
Right.
Because we're not going to, I mean, if we do these sequentially, we're going to have, it's going to be a long time before anything is given back to the select board because they're, they're so interrelated.
Right, right, and I think they want to know what direction we're, we're leaning, leaning in.
Yeah.
Uh as, as soon as possible. If we're going for, if we want to go for zoning, I think they want to know that.
Yeah, and the, well, that's part of the question when we when we say here's, here's what we propose, we'd like to know what you expect
Yeah.
from this, or it, you know, would you expect this in different, at different levels of completion?
Okay, yeah, Dana.
In the effort to provide some structure and perhaps consistency and integrity into what we would do, um, I, I fully appreciate the recommendation uh that the select board is looking for from us. For me, I need to make informed decisions, and I would feel most informed and most um prepared to make a suggestion. If I reviewed, I, I'm just talking about myself now. If I, one, reviewed Kevin's work on the bylaws, and that we got that passed and sent back to them for, for their approval, they would then have something concrete to go on and compare to our recommendations, which they've asked us to explain. We have that, and they've adopted that, then we have something to support our recommendation. Two, the streets and sidewalks uh ordinance is integrally linked to the bylaws. And so I think that that needs to also be worked on, potentially simultaneously with the bylaws. Get those things taken care of and out of the way by November, by Thanksgiving. Then we have something that we can refer to and have the select board look at specifically about why we're making the recommendations that we do. After that.
Let him finish, Norman.
After that, uh, I don't have a preference because river corridors is still out there in the future. We can take some time, because now we have on the plate the Act um one eighty-one, housing and wetlands and things like that. And those two, the river corridors and housing, blah, 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 and Act two fifty are going to integrate. So I don't have a preference about when we do that, but I would suggest that we start that work in December. One or the other, or both simultaneously. My third recommendation is that we put um uh special work groups together like we've did with the bylaws, where we um have a meeting, one meeting in between our regular uh meetings, and we can set that schedule up so that we have one dedicated focused discussion uh on one of these topics, and we're going to take it section by section, or we're going to take it theme by theme, or whatever it happens to be. So that we aren't spending a lot of time talking about many different things at our uh regularly scheduled planning commission meetings so that we can get a work session done and ha- have that knocked off. Now, do we need that for the bylaws and the streets and sidewalks? I don't know, because we've put so much time into that already.
Right.
But it would definitely be something that we need to do with river corridors and Act one eighty-one. So that's, there's my whole.
What is in Act eighty-one eighty-one there just said asking us to do a review, right?
Yeah.
Just a simple review?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm thinking that should be the priority.
And, and.
And then just get it done at the next couple of meetings and just get it back to them. We will all just read it and.
And if their decision that we make, they come from that review that are dependent on whether or not some of this other stuff is done, we can indicate that in the, in what we give them.
Right, right.
And one eighty-one as a, I mean, we, the implication is that we have a housing shortage here in, in the state. Correct? And, and that we are attempting to make a correction on that.
Mm-hmm.
And so the faster we get that into the pipeline, the faster we can have potentially more housing constructed.
I'm concerned that that is the least uh that we are least familiar with that, and the amount of time that will actually be necessary to grapple with it and make an informed decision and recommendation to the select board is greater than membership here might think.
Okay.
But that could be part, that could be the report to the select board, you know.
Part of the, part of the report, yeah.
This is our schedule, and um this is where we're leaning with one eighty-one, just initially. Uh, Norm, did you have something?
When you were referring to bylaws, you're talking about the um river corridor bylaws?
Subdivision.
Subdivision bylaws, okay.
Ordinance.
That's an ordinance, yeah, I mean, it's called.
That is an ordinance already, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's what you were referring to, and that's where you think we should start.
Yes, because Kevin has made some recommendations. And that is important for us to understand what our authority is and what, how we are going to be operating. Making, not having an understand, for me, not having an understanding of what that is would not help me to be informed about Act one eighty-one.
But I, I think that's true if you're looking for a final document, but if you, if you present something and indicate information that you don't have, there may be information there that will help the select board make some decisions, even knowing that we don't have everything.
I would, I would prefer, I, I agree with you, um, Sherman, but I would prefer, just myself, I would prefer to have grappled with the subdivision ordinance to help inform myself about any recommendation that I would be making on one eighty-one.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a subset, this is a small subset of one eighty-one.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. It, it won't really influence one eighty-one too much. Um, it is my, yeah, my thinking. How about we'll come to some consensus on what, on this, you know, we've got two schools of thought here. But how about if we also toss in um having um someone from this department come down? Because both one A and one B, um, we have to, because we have to um consider uh village centers or uh planned growth areas.
Didn't we say already say that one A and one B require zoning in the town?
But that could be, I mean, that could be what the, the select board eventually needs to decide. You know, if, if we're going to take advantage of one eighty-one, does the town pursue zoning?
Well, I've been on this board long enough to know that. Having gone through and put, helped put a zoning document together, that there's just no chance. So, I mean, what, the doc, that's a state law, essentially, that one eighty-one, right? It's been passed, it's law. So really, alls we can do is just review it and just render an opinion back to them rather quickly. Well, we don't have to study it in great depth or anything else. I mean, really, there's only so many provisions of it that could possibly apply to us, and, and the major ones are if we don't have zoning or we're not going to qualify for most of it, and Norman wants it.
I, I, I share Andy's reservations. Um, the history of zoning in Rutland Town, or the resistance to zoning is very, very deep-seated. I would think we might want to go to the select board before we start and say um, this is what the situation is in the state legislation, and we get more control if we have zoning, otherwise, uh, control. And do you feel that as the zoning ordinance is appropriated at this time, and are you telling us you would support it? And get.
I'd make a motion to that effect right now, tonight, Norman, if you'd see what I do.
Sorry?
I'd make a motion to that effect tonight, if that's what you'd like to do. I'm not joking.
Get, because.
Hold on a second.
What I, what I can see is that we don't know which way to go. Um but I think we also need to think about, if we do a zoning ordinance, can we do it on top of all this other stuff that we're, you know?
Oh, we might have to um.
I'm sorry?
We might have to shop some of this stuff out.
Right.
Uh, we, we can't possibly do all of this.
But again, a draft ordinance, or we'd get some other ones, we could have Kevin Brown chime in and say, what, what are the things we would want to put in there? And then we take a work group and work.
And as a, I, my guess would be even with the working groups, getting a zoning ordinance.
It's going to be tough.
A multi-year
Right.
project.
I thought, I thought.
And that's exactly.
It would involve perhaps incorporating several other ordinances that we have into one overriding ordinance. I just don't know whether there's the, I'd want to be.
And that's exactly what the select board is asking, is like, what should we be pursuing um for one eighty-one over the next few years? It's going to take a few years to do all this, if, if we go this way, e- either one A or one B. And what, what is the planning commission's rationale for either of those tiers? That would include what are going to be the obstacles. Um, that would include some of the things we're already working on, subdivision and river corridor. So I mean, I, I think what they're looking at, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, because this kind of came out of the blue the other night, too. Um, that, that, they're, they're just looking for a little guidance now. They're, they're not looking for a whole lot of substance right now. Um, but I, I, I don't think they understand everything that we're doing. And um I think they would like us to look this material over and just and come up with an initial recommendation, an initial recommendation that, that over the next few years, this is what the town should.
When Devin came and talked about this a couple of meetings ago, brought this up, he went through the designations, and we're, we're like second or third from the, from the bottom of this, so we, we, there's room, room to go, but they were talking about, does it make sense to try and pursue like a designation, like a bill of designation, which we don't, we don't have, like, that's a step. So I think they're looking at, do, do we try, do the steps to get to where we want to go make sense? Yes or no? Like, that's kind of, that's kind of it, and, and because they, they are, they don't have the time to get the in-depth into this document, so that's what they're looking for is help, is like, give it, give us an up or down, like, what's, what, is this, is this worth going after, or is it just too much to, too much to go on?
Right, and then that's why I keep bringing up getting the state person to at least help us with the um, the designations or the planned growth areas.
Designations for what?
If we ask this.
Villages or planned growth areas, that they're one of the requirements for one A or B. Yeah, Andy?
Have to selectmen which order they would like us to do this in. I mean, they've given us all these different items, but, you know, I would draw it their priority is. And the other thing is, I would like to know, are they, are they making motion and, and voting on this before they give us these items? Or is this just coming from discussion?
Um.
For discussion?
I can't remember if this was a motion.
It, it was just in discussion, it was, it was on their agenda from the last meeting, so Mary had it on, just to bring it up again, and, and just, it wasn't, it wasn't a formal motion, it was, it was a request.
I'd like to ask them that from now on, that anything that comes to us comes, comes by a motion.
And, and why is that, Andy?
Wheels.
Pardon?
He said, why is that? So we aren't spinning our wheels?
Precisely.
Okay.
If, if the majority of the board doesn't really want us to pursue a certain thing, then there is really no sense in us pursuing it. But it certainly, also, I'm saying, I'm certainly going to pursue it, but if, but it should be, a majority should be asking us to do it.
Yes, Dan. Building on what you just said, Andy.
Hmm.
Uh, I, I think I would, I would feel personally, I would feel more comfortable as a planning commission member to know that we can bring things to culmination before we are asked to uh start going off in a different direction. Since I've been sitting here uh for the last however many years, we often get something that gets across the select board's plate, and there's a bit of a knee-jerk reaction about what does this mean? And since they don't have time to figure out what it means, they ask us to take it on and figure that out. Um, and, and that, that's okay, and that's their prerogative, but to your point, I would like that to be a planful, thoughtful discussion that they motion and tell us what the timeline is.
Right, well.
Because um when we sit here, and Barbara does a great job putting together our, our, our impending task list as things come up, uh for me, it's a question of us then setting the priorities. If we get a timeline about when something needs, when they would like an answer, because it makes a big difference to me whether they want an answer next week, or they want an answer in January.
Mm-hmm.
Because if, if they don't, if they can wait till January, I'd rather get our work done that we've been working on for the last eighteen months, or longer, and bring it to them and say, this is a final product. This is something that you can count on as a result of the work that we've done, and you can use it and. This is something that you can count on as a result of the work that we've done, and you can use it and incorporate it into informing yourself about the other uh, items that are coming across your plate. For for me, that that just is more integrated, and it's more cohesive, and it builds collaboration between the select board.
So do you feel that what I'm asking is unreasonable, or or that we should pursue it and and make the request? And I'll put that in a motion if we want to.
I think what two of you are talking about are complementary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely, I I was.
So you're, you're saying just, and also add a timeline along with it?
Yes, with respect, and I would keep it focused on the last thing that popped up on their agenda, and that is one eighty one, because those other three things we have already taken on in some manner. And what I would add is that we are currently working on three things that are coming to fruition. Knowing that we are working on those three things that are coming to fruition, which are going to inform any recommendation about act one eighty one. We would like a timeline, and we would like a motion from the select board to instruct us about what to do and by when, in a reasonable way. That way, we know what their priority is, and we're not guessing, and then we don't have to be shifting our work to meet a, an abstract uh, deadline that they may not even be imposing.
Okay.
Is it one eighty one or two eighty one? I'm sorry.
Uh, one eighty one is act two fifty.
Okay, alright.
One twenty one is the river corridor.
I had it two eighty one.
Yeah, it's it's gonna get confusing, if it hasn't already.
It's housing and act two fifty, right, one eighty one?
Yes.
My comment, um, and I support Andy and Dana in looking for specificity. Because I don't think we want the kind of misunderstanding we had with respect to the short term rental ordinance. When we came together, we worked on it, we presented it, they came here. We thought they were going to come and talk about the details of our ordinance, and they were talking, and the the joint meeting was more whether we should adopt it in the first place. And I was very surprised and a little bit disappointed, and ultimately it worked out okay. But I think we want to avoid that kind of misunderstanding, and have some certainty in where we're going and some clarity, and we're just really asking for some direction from our leaders.
Okay, we, you, that's a very good point. We will never be able to hundred percent know what they will be doing with what we present them.
I'm sorry.
We will never know, when we finish our work, what will happen to it after that.
Right.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the point. The point is, what are, what are their priorities? Because we're sitting here with a C uh, of of work. And complicated work and time consuming work, and we've all done it before, we're, we wouldn't be here if we weren't happy to do it again. But I think I'm now asking them to give pre approval to what we produce. But we're saying, is this, tell us what you want, and in what order you want it, and perhaps uh, some kind of timeline, so we know where they, where to go.
That makes a lot of sense.
And I think basically, have I paraphrased you guys right?
Yes, yes. Quite.
This, to me, this is turned out to be two things we're talking about. One is in general, how we are given.
Yes.
The procedure for giving us work to do. But we started talking about how we're going to attack these four issues that we have, and and I think we should be careful not to mix them up, especially when we present whatever we're going to present to the select board.
Okay.
And we already have these things that they want. And I don't think we're asking them to go back.
No, no.
So so I'm just saying.
They know about those things.
Yeah, let's keep it separate so that we can have a serious conversation about the procedure to get something, that's not what happened in the past.
No, no, right, and it's, and that's why I was specific about this particular, that can become the model for how we ask them in the future.
Before, before you make the motion? As you two decide who's gonna make the motion, Mary Beth, do you have any comments?
I'll move to table.
Sounds good. Hey, hey, Mary Beth, did you just wake up to say that?
I was yelling in the family to be quiet for a minute, so I could unmute.
Sorry, does the, just throw that at you in a surprise manner. Okay, is there a motion?
Apparently Andy has charged me with making one.
Start it off, that will be request that, uh, okay. I would just say, before we start. We just don't mention any this, because what we're asking for is basically a model from now on, with anything we would do.
Sure, but what I'm, the reason I put this in here is because I want it to be specific to this.
Well, then you. Go for it, yeah.
You'll second? So I'll make a motion to have the select board take official action regarding the charge to the planning commission regarding act uh, one eighty one implications for Rutland Town. And the direction we recommend uh, going with, uh, uh, going forward with a timeline for responding to their charge.
Um, this, the first part is what again?
To have the select board.
From the beginning again.
Yep, I will make a motion to have the select board take official action regarding the charge to the planning commission regarding uh, the act one eighty one implications for Rutland Town, and the direction we recommend going forward.
You're asking them to recognize the implications.
I'm asking them to recognize implications.
I don't get the second part.
I'm asking the select, I'm asking us to take them, I'm, I'm making a motion to have the select board take official action regarding the charge to us, the planning commission, regarding the act one eighty one implications for Rutland Town. And the direction we recommend going forward.
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
We're making, they're asking us for a recommendation about what approach to take, correct?
Yeah, so the recommendations would be a separate separate action, or a separate statement from us in addition to this motion.
No. They're asking for our recommendation. That's what I heard Barbara say.
And 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 I interpreted that as being an iterative process, I mean, we're not going to be able to figure all this out at once.
I understand that, that's why I put a timeline.
Going through stages of this.
Right, so, help me understand what is not understandable. I'll start again, stop me whenever it's not clear. I make a motion
Don't worry.
To have the select board take official action regarding their charge to the planning commission about act one eighty one implications for Rutland Town.
Uh, wha- what does that mean?
Yeah, that's too broad.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, let's just delete that last part, and just leave it just regarding act one eighty one.
Okay, fine, I can do that, regarding act one eighty one.
Yeah, somehow we wanted to to say that we get, we want official action before we start research on any particular subject.
Right.
Good to get some direction, too, while we're at it.
Well, that's what I was trying to do in one.
Norm, did you have a?
Read the first dozen words or so again, please.
Okay. I make a motion to have the select board take official action regarding their charge to the planning commission about act one eighty one.
Period.
Well, I I didn't have one, but that's okay, I'm stopping there because there's a pause. Is that clear?
A little ambiguous, about one, act one eighty one seems to be very vague.
Well, I think that what we've gotten from a charge from them is pretty vague.
I understand that, but if we're looking for clarity.
So clarify it. Clarify it.
Trying to think about it.
I think maybe as a first step, that it would be good to tell them what we are working on. You know, we we are finalizing the subdivision.
A motion about that. We don't need a motion about that.
Okay, so, but this is what we're taking, this is what we're initially taking to the select board, right? We're asking them for an official, that, you know, whatever that you want to call it, an affirmation, official, whatever, um, charge. And I think we should report back to them that we're already working on these things, zoning was not part of it. Um, village designations were not part of it, and 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 give them, give them some you know, direction to give us direction. Give them some, you know, fleshed out a little bit more for them, where we're, where we are, where we are at right now.
So there are two things, I I supported Andy in his statement about getting clarity from the select board. I am trying to formulate a motion to get clarity from the select board now and in the future. All that you've said, Barbara, is completely fine, but if they say, what is this about, then you give them all of the background about where we are and what we're doing, and what we're trying to achieve. That does not have to go into a motion, and so if we don't need a motion, then.
Maybe we should work on it next, next time, and and all think about it tomorrow, is one thing I was going to say, but the second thing is, what what, my point is that from now on, that's how I would like it to be done.
Right, yeah.
On everything, so not specifically just this one.
No, but if we do this, we can tell them at any point in the future.
To to get more, more of a sense of where they're coming from, and and to prevent us from going down too many dead end roads.
Right, precisely.
I, I think it would be better if we separate that, forget act one eighty one in terms of what we present to the select board, in asking for our actions on things given to us, and then subsequent to that, we can talk about the issues we have and clarity for what they want. But, but to mix up this one thing with what we want to do going forward, I think is it just makes it too easy to have a long conversation. And it's just one conversation, and it's about whether or not the select board will take official action on anything that's passed on to us, is is nice and concise and can be answered. And and then we can, when that's done, yea or nay, and we can talk about our issues with.
Right. It's a motion in and of itself.
Yes.
Getting that, getting charges.
Yeah.
Yeah, my my biggest interest right now, and why I support it, Andy, is I want to know what the hell they want us to do with one eighty one in one minute. That's what I really want.
I I agree, but it just, if you put them together, it makes them from a much longer conversation, if we make it just here's the way things are going to be handled between communication between the two organizations.
What I would say, uh, Sherman, is that the intensity of with which we get these, the, these requests. I think that we need to ask for clarification on what they want us to do with one eighty one and when.
I agree hundred percent.
So let's just ask.
So, I agree, but let's not do that while we're saying.
So let's cable the other part, moving forward until we can get clarity on one thing, because if they have clarity on one thing in their mind about what they're giving us.
Yeah.
Then we can go back and say, hey, last time, remember, we had you do this for one eighty one, we'd like you to do this all the time.
Yeah, and and the sequence you do it in is.
Right, yeah.
So do we still want to do a motion or not? We have an awful lot of discussion here, the only good.
I make a motion that we ask the select board uh, to tell us what they want to do, what they want us to do with act one eighty one, and by when, how's that, is that short enough?
Perfect.
One eighty one and what?
By when?
And by when?
And it doesn't have to be worded like that when we give it to the select, that's for our, that's for our understanding, which is.
You tell me what you want me to write.
No, that's the, that's the motion right now, what he just, what.
But I'm saying that motion is for
Just.
For us to understand what we want to do, that's not necessarily the way we want to say it to the select board.
Yeah.
Present it to the select board, that's. Or is it?
No, I think it is, yeah, I would like to offer a suggestion. I think what might be best, given, I mean, this is threshold action. You know, this is, this is a new frontier, that, you know, we've never stepped into this much work at the same time from the select board. And I'm not sure their direction to us at this time is as clear as we would like it, because we're all confused. Dana, my my suggestion would be that Dana draft a motion, that it go out to us, and the motion be on the agenda for the next meeting. We can review it, reflect on it, and come, I don't even know if I'll be here, but, because I'm leaving the next day from Minneapolis, but travel to town for a few days, but I think, I I'm not sure we're all on the same page here, generally, we are. And when but, just reading it aloud.
I think we are.
Pretty close.
But the thing is with the timeline, we got a select board meeting coming up on the twenty fourth of September. So it would be nice if we got a request to them in, so that the next meeting, we have an answer.
There's some truth to that, too, I agree.
Yeah.
So.
I I think we've got, I think we've got a motion that.
Yeah, I think that motion is.
Alright, so my motion, I'll re, I'll read it again, if somebody wants to change a word, I'll be happy to, uh, friendly amendment. My motion is to ask the select board to tell the planning commission what they expect from us, what they expect us to do, excuse me, uh, regarding act one eighty one and by when. I'll say it again. My motion is to ask the select board to tell the planning commission what they expect us to do regarding act one eighty one, and by when. Other words, timeline.
They may just flip that and say, well, you know, we want you to come up with.
Okay, if they do that, then I am going to respectfully request that we put it off until we get the other things off our plate. That if they, if they flip it back to us, that's my recommendation for us as a body to to deal with, and not make act one eighty one a priority, if they don't want to give it to us.
About the motion, that just seems conversational as opposed to definitive. And I'm not sure.
What's not definitive about telling us what they expect us to do, and by when they want it done?
Start, that's okay, it was before that, no, I agree, that's.
Okay, so stop any words you don't like. My motion is to ask the select board, or perhaps I should charge the chair.
Yes.
Ask the select.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Charge.
That's where I was going.
The chair of the PC to ask the select board to tell us what what they expect um, us to do regarding act one eighty one and by when. I'll repeat it. My motion is to charge the chair of the planning commission.
Request the chair to direct the chair.
No, just to charge, just, we give her the charge of doing that. This, to ask the select board to tell us what they expect us or the planning commission to do regarding act one eighty one and by when, in other words, the timeline.
Now, probably preface that with what we're working on.
You can do whatever you like, I'm just making a simple motion.
Think that just, I mean, because it'll all come up in discussion.
Yes.
But this'll, this'll cover what we're we're asking for, to get to where they want us to put act one eighty one in the, in the schedule.
Right.
And and I think that that you could summarize some pieces of our conversation, back when we were talking about the four things that we're doing.
Exactly, that's what I meant, yeah.
And then the question, the request who follows that.
Right.
What I would, what I would assume is you would go with. What I would, what I would assume is you would go with this motion with this directive, this charge uh, and say that something to the effect that given the other various ordinances that we are, we are.
I I don't want that in the motion.
No, 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 no. Talking about it.
This is part of the.
Responding to Barbara's.
The appeal to the select board.
And then say, we are working on, the reason for this is we're working on A, B, C, and D already. And do you want us to put that aside and devote our first block of attention to Act 81 and 181 and when do you want it done? Because they all kind of fit together.
They all, they all do.
And um, in fact, in fact, 181 is the grandfather of a re of a local planning.
It will be. It will be.
Yeah, then we need more direction as to what to do.
Okay. Mary Beth, you okay with that?
I can. I'm okay with that.
Just want to make sure.
Have we put you to sleep?
That you can still hear us. Um, so, okay, um, a motion has been made.
No, in seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
She's a, you're a little behind, Mary Beth. I think so was I.
It sounded unanimous. Okay. Twenty fourth.
Shoulders, Barb.
Yeah, thank you. So, okay, so we've got some interesting stuff. Um.
Do you want me to show up on the 24th, Barbara? I can probably.
Okay, okay. Um. So two different topics, the Cortina. Let's start with that because that's always a bummer. And then we'll, and on a higher note. Uh, so Health and Human Services was before the select board again, uh, the commissioner and deputy commissioner or something like that. Um, and this is the first time since, I mean, they were at May 21st meeting and they were at this this week's meeting. Um, so there is, the state set up a new system where uh, people can use um, hotel motel vote vouchers for 80 days, but any 80 days within a a given year. Most of them are choosing just to use them up and hoping for the best after that. Um, so that means um, when the 80 days are up on September 19th, um, there will probably be a lot more homeless people in Rutland. Will probably, um, there could be campsites. There definitely will be people living in vehicles. Um, and there definitely will be people looking for more services. And it was, it was, it was kind of disappointing that the state continues to keep pushing this off, pushing the solutions and making ta make making cities and towns come up with the resources to take care of these people that the state has put in certain towns. They say that they're making it more equitable statewide. Um, uh, I guess through the room cap, the there's only 1,100 rooms available right now. And for some reason, they're saying that's more equitable.
At statewide?
Statewide. And the fact that there's fewer, I guess, in Rutland and Barry and Burlington, that's more equitable.
There are fewer in Rutland than in Barry.
Same percentage.
What they're saying is Rutland has a disproportionate number of people using this program. And as they approve new ones, they are balancing approvals in other parts of the state. So it's not like 80%, 10%, 10%.
So there's 300.
Were the 80%? Yeah. No, I'm, I was just clarifying.
We we have, they said Rutland has a disproportionate number of people using this program. And as they approve them in the future, they are going to make sure it's balanced around the state so that there's not a larger, that's a larger number of one area than another.
So the number of vouchers that they approve per municipality will accomplish that. Supposedly, there's 353 households uh, in still in the voucher system right now.
Here in Rutland.
Here in Rutland.
Uh, Rutland, not just the Cortina.
Right, 350 cases in Rutland.
And there were probably, was that just the town or was that the city and the town?
She did not have the specific numbers.
Right, right.
Just with all of Rutland.
The county.
And and it was disappointing that the state was saying, you know, the select board was saying, well, have you looked into modular homes? Have you looked into tiny houses? And their answer to all of that stuff is yes, but the, you know, we found they're too expensive. You know, and they just keep pushing this off, you know, there was, you know, from the state onto where where these people have ended up.
The only movement toward any is that at a state level has been through the legislature, government, I mean.
Yeah.
They haven't been doing anything.
Who hasn't been doing it?
The the state.
The legislature?
Like, no, the non legislature, the state.
The departments.
The agencies.
Agencies, yes. In no terminal.
Chris Loris's role in this is what again? Who is he working for?
It's is that, it's that, that organization that's part of the city that's, is it Rutland Development or? It it's not clear why it's not part of the city government, but it's a separate organization. He works for them. And my understanding from back a couple of months ago, when they described the grant that came from the state, I think, was that that organization is going to come up with a plan? That was my understanding. So I could have misinterpreted that.
Yeah, um, yeah, that that's the impression I got that Chris is working on it, you know, from the state, you know. Don't worry, Chris is, Chris Loris is working on it.
Uh, putting a little too much pressure on any one individual or small group.
Well, that's the organization, yeah, that's the organization. I don't, I don't, I'm not implying he's doing that alone. He's part of the.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm a little um, concerned that the state is taking a less than fair attitude in saying that all this, our solution that this is that this person and or group is actually trying to solve the problem.
Right, right, right.
Um, putting enough effort behind it or having representatives to actually be able to problem solve that.
Right. And and, you know, they just, there was this refrain, well, they just, they need shelters and they need services. That's all you have to do, Rutland. Just, it's like.
It's more than that.
It is more than that, and and they're not bringing anything to the table.
State hasn't attempted to.
Not.
The the whole thing is the state doesn't want to take responsibility for a problem they created.
Right.
I think you're right.
Right, and it's up to nonprofits and municipal governments.
I'll give you another example that uh, spells that out pretty pretty clearly. The state no owns all the National Guard armories around the state here. With the exception of the one here in Rutland, that's that's federally owned. They've closed up several because of uh, outdated facility for training and a whole bunch of other reasons.
They don't meet standards.
Security and and whatever. And and they've turned these buildings over to the community as fast as they can. These buildings were all equipped with kitchens, with showers, everything that that you would need for housing people for an extended period. And they couldn't get rid of them fast enough because they were afraid that somebody would suggest that they use them for some of this indigenous population here.
Hmm.
And it it just doesn't make any sense, you know?
Right, there's no, no master plan, that's for sure. Um, so, yeah, I mean, so the upshot is the voucher program is ending for the year for the most part, unless some of the people decided to spread out the 80 days. There's already uh, more homeless on the streets. It's it's evident. But we, and we're not even at the September 19 cutoff. So it's not a lot of time to for the services and the providers to get ready for um, the 353 households. So that's that's the continuation of the bad news about the voucher program. Let's go to.
The good news.
The pocket park, Andy. So.
We're adjourned.
You don't want to go. This is, this is, this is kind of cool. So, um, so both the feds and the state were doing archaeological review of the site as part of GMP's relicensing. And the feds decided that there's just been too much activity, too much disturbance. Um, it's just, you know, it's not worth any more review or any more restrictions. The state had a different view, but the feds prevailed uh, because it's the federal government. So GMP is getting, going to get its license. And as a result of that decision about the archaeological resources, the feds took the property that we're looking at, the site for the pocket park, out of the GMP licensing process. So it's outside the project boundary and GMP can do what it wants with with that property. Um, way back when, when Omea was there, they said, we're going to use it for recreation and and the feds didn't forget that. So GMP um, is very favorable for the town taking that site over for a pocket park. And um, there is this window we have right now where we can talk to them about maybe buying it for a nominal fee. In fact, a dollar was mentioned. Um, and if that doesn't work out, there could be an agreement to have access to the property. So we've got the green, excuse me?
Would we lease it?
Why would we want to do that? That was like an ongoing expense.
I don't know. It's just like we can't, if I understand the configuration correctly, but then we can't exclude them. You know, the water runs through the pocket park. Um.
But the pocket park, it's all on one side.
Yeah.
It's all on one side, so.
Didn't know, wouldn't be any easement or anything. It'd just be, they gift, they gift it to us for a dollar or they sell it to us for a dollar. What was the other option?
Okay.
Or they can.
Then it just makes sense.
An access agreement.
Oh, okay.
You know, the town can use it for a park for, you know, the next, you know, 50 years, 100 years or whatever. Um, but they're, they're very keen on 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 selling it to to the town. Um, and they're, they're looking at consolidating some of their assets anyway across the board. Uh, GMP is. Um, and so the next step is to talk to their real estate um, person and just see what, if a deal can be made for three, a little bit more than three acres there. They also recommended that since the state really was pretty serious about the archaeological value of that site, that that we keep that in mind and that we probably include them in our planning, our discussions, any grants might require that they they there might be grants that require their review, you know, at some point. So we just stay in their their good graces. Even though they were trumped by by the feds for for this decision.
They were what?
Trumped.
Don't make me say that word again. Um. So, yeah, that's, that's it. Um, so the next step is to just see what kind of a deal the town can get.
Wow, that's good news.
It might be something else on our plate.
Number five. Let's make that number one.
Again, this has to go through the select board?
Um, Mary's, Mary's part of this. Uh, I brought it up the other night. Um, so the the instructions to, I mean, it was decided that we would go and talk to GMP.
Who's going to talk to GMP? Who's going to do that? Mary or you or?
Yeah, the both of us. We've been kind of trying to push this along.
Who's going to take it forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Specifically who is going to take it forward. Thank you.
Right, so we may want to rethink some of the things along the river with all the flooding that's going on, but that's for another day.
Yep.
What are GMPs?
The river is not GMPs, but why? It's, it's like owned by the people of Vermont or something. I don't know. It's, it's.
They have a lease to use the river, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a natural.
No. Who who controls access? If we buy that property from GMP, goes.
Um, one of the reasons why they agreed to this, the the feds, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, is that there was nothing in the parks, the pocket parks plans that would uh, be in the river. So, um, everything up to the river is 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 what they agreed to. And that's what we're talking about. That's what we, that's what our plans and our, you know, design has been all about.
It somehow was confusing owed access.
But we're not doing anything in the river. We're just putting recreational, you know, craft. And the launch would be on the parcels land. It would not extend into, it's the extension into the river.
Okay, almost not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the minutes for, and any announcements from around the table? Okay, the minutes for August 1st, I don't think any of us have them. And who do we need to approve those?
Barbara, Howard, Sherman, Norm, and Mary Beth.
Oh, we can. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 1st?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Probably not too much since we don't have them in front of us.
Howard. I have them.
I have. I didn't find any, anything to correct.
Okay. We ready for the question?
How about that, Bill?
All those in favor of approving August 1st minutes? Say aye.
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 Opposed? And Andy's accusing himself abstaining.
Yeah, I wasn't present either.
And Dana's abstaining, okay. How about August 22nd?
But it was approved unanimously by the people present. That's all you need to know.
There's your options.
I think I have those.
Barbara, Howard, Andy, Jerry, Mary Beth.
Thank you, Barbara. Barbara, Howard, Andy, Jerry, Mary Beth. So that's four out of five.
Four of five.
And four out of seven is a quorum. So you're good.
If Mary Beth is still functioning.
Mary Beth is still there. You're still wake up.
We need your vote, Mary Beth.
Still there. I did vote. I said aye on the minute.
Oh, no, next, next one.
For the next set, too. We got two sets.
Ah, okay. I can't remember this at the meeting before that. So the last one was.
August 22nd, you were, you were the person.
I was here.
You weren't at, you weren't at the first, but you were at the 22nd.
Let's see.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, you're right. Yep.
So moved. I'll move that one.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, August 22nd minutes. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'm abstaining. I wasn't abstaining.
And Sherman and Norm are abstaining.
So just so that we know that it was Barb, Howard, Andy, Jerry, Mary Beth. So four out of five again. And four out of seven makes the quorum. So that was approved unanimously.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't, I wasn't present, so you can take me off the list. Still doing pen and spill.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Sherman's second.